Today is Monday, December 18th. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Cranston City Council meeting for the month of December. At this time, I'd ask the clerk, please take the role in attendance.
Councilman Ferry.
Present.
Councilwoman Ranzouli.
Present.
Councilwoman Jermaine.
Present.
Councilman Donigan.
Present.
Councilman Campopiano.
Present.
Councilman Paploskas.
Present.
Councilman Wall.
Here.
Council Vice President Vargas.
Present.
Council President Moreno.
Present.
Next, if you'll please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, we have the approval of the minutes from the prior regular council meeting in November. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion there being none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilman Ferry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ranzouli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine.
Yes.
Councilman Donigan.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Paploskas.
Yes.
Councilman Wall.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas.
Yes.
Council President Moreno.
Yes. Next is public acknowledgements and commendations. Councilwoman Ranzouli, I believe you have some citations this evening. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we are going to honor the Boys and Girls Cross Country Teams from Hope Highlands Middle School, who are the city champions this year for Cranston Cross Country, City of Cranston Cross Country Championships. I have citations for everyone on both of those teams. It's actually the first year in the school's history that they have won on both the girls' and the boys' side. I would ask Councilman Campopiano to please come up. He is the councilman of the ward four that that middle school is in. And as everyone comes up, we'll do, I'll bring up Coach Jamie Brinker first, and then I'll go through the girls, you can take a picture, then I'll go through the boys. Then I'd also like to call up, it'll be the top seven finishers from each gender as well for across the city. That's the all-city team, and we'll take a picture of all of them. And then they will receive citations, we'll take them, send them right to their school, okay? Thank you. So first, I'd just like to call up Coach Jamie "Burger" Brinker. And if you could just be careful of the wire when you come through, okay? Next, we have Leah Yanovich. Stella Palagio. Emma Mitson. Lily Martinez. Liliana Fowler. Angelina Di Biagio. Daria Duravanko. Addison Colia Giovanni. Natalie Chu. Nora Chaconi. And that's our 2023 Girls City Championship Team from Cranston. Thank you, ladies. You can have a seat. And if you're on the all-city team, you'll come back up again. Next for the boys' team, we have Nicholas Uphim. Jack Uchi. Dominic Trubuco. Luca Tolamo. Musa Sahi. Joshua Rogiri. Jay Snuvo. Adit Modi. Jack Magno. Tyler Fektu. Tai Chong. Alexandra Barrera. Holden Butler. Shepherd Butler. Congratulations to the 2023 City Championship Boys Team from Hope Highlands. You may have a seat. And now we're just going to bring up the top seven at the city meet from each gender. They'll be from different schools, and you'll receive your citations at your school. But come up and take a picture, okay? So from Hope Highlands, we have Leah Yanovich. Stella Palagio. And Liliana Fowler. From Parkview, we have Brooke Sloan. From Western Hills, we have Madeline Marks. Again, from Hope Highlands, we have Lily Martinez. And from Bain, we have Suzette Falcon Gonzalez. Congratulations to the all-city team from Cranston for girls. Hey, ladies, you may have a seat. And the top seven boys' finishers we have for the all-city team from Hope Highlands, we have Shepherd Butler. Shep also just returned from the national championship, where he did very well. Next, from Parkview, we have Nathaniel Brenneck. From Western Hills, we have Nathaniel Beatty. From Hope Highlands, we have Alex Barrera. From Parkview, we have Cameron Taylor. From Western Hills, we have Will Newton and Zach Roberts. And these are your top seven finishers for the boys at the Cranston City Cross Country Meet. Thank you. Boys can have a seat, and your citations will be delivered to your school. If anyone else here present has any spelling mistakes on their citations, it does happen sometimes. So just contact your coach, who will contact me, and I'll get it taken care of for you. I wish you happy holidays, a happy new year. If you don't run indoor track, I hope you run outdoor track. And I hope to see you in high school as well, if you're graduating, or next year back here again. Have a great night, thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have, we do not have any resolutions this evening. We can move right on to reports of committees. Councilwoman Jermaine.
Thank you.
Thank you. We, I skipped over, not we, I, I skipped over all the excitement, moving right on to resolutions. Thank you, Councilman Donigan. We first need to have public hearing and public comment on any docketed matters this evening. If there's anyone in chambers that wishes to be heard on any docketed matters, please step up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments limited to four minutes. And after that, we will take public comment on docketed matters from people on Zoom with the same ask. Thank you.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. Nick Lima, Registered Director of Elections for the canvassing authority. On the docket this evening is approval for submission to the General Assembly an act that would begin the process of establishing a special election for later this spring. I just want to give the council a very, very quick overview on what that means for our office, and in addition, what the next important steps are for the council. So the Board of Canvassers met two weeks ago and discussed the preliminary options of what the best dates would be to hold that special election for both our operations, given that it's a presidential election year, as well as for the voters in the city. And the board unanimously voted to suggest to the city council that the election be held on June 4th, 2024. That'd be the first Tuesday in June, in compliance with Rhode Island state law for special elections. There is an option as well to hold the election on May 7th, 2024. There are actually a couple of other towns that are likewise considering special elections next spring, which are looking at that date. But when we discussed that with the board, as well as the staff in our office, we felt that the proximity to the April 2nd Presidential preference primary, as well as some other worries we have about voter confusion and overlapping deadlines for mail ballots and 20 days of early voting, which would essentially start directly after that primary, would be a little concerning. And most importantly for our office, under the state constitution, there's a 30-day voter registration deadline, which means voter rolls freeze 30 days prior to an election. And if we were to have a May 7th date, we essentially would have 60 consecutive days or more of frozen voter rolls, which would be a major backlog for our office to make up when we hit mid-May and June, as we get ready for candidate declaration for the September and November elections. And that could have a lot of negative impacts and ramifications for that. So to avoid that, and also to streamline our voter communications, the June 4th date was the board's preference. Ultimately, it is entirely up to the city council. And that's my next item, is that the board, as well as I as the Elections Director, strongly encourage the council, if possible, to adopt a resolution setting that date at the January meeting. That would allow us to move forward in planning and with confidence in planning around that date. Now, we already have started the preliminary work for that. We've begun to reach out to deploying places. We worked with the state to produce a draft election calendar, which I've set to the council. If you didn't receive it, just let me know, and I can resend it to you. In addition, we've worked with Pastoral Youth Center to book dates for the early voting and started to figure out ideas for things like poll work and training classes and whatnot that would have to happen in the lead-up to that election. There is a deadline, about just under two months out from an election, which the Board of Canvassers does have to certify. Any questions to the Secretary of State, tentatively? I would like the board to do that at our March 12th final canvas meeting for the presidential primary. That would give the General Assembly, assuming this act is passed tonight, would be introduced in the first week or two of the session, a good two months to get that final language approved and signed by the governor, so that the board can again move forward with confidence in that final ballot language, so we can get ballots printed and mail ballots out to voters beginning in late April. Early voting would start May 15th under that calendar, run for 20 days. Again, we would do that at the Pastoral Youth Center, which is what we're doing for all four elections that we're looking at for next year. And in the last issue I just wanted to bring to the council's attention is the rarity of special elections. It's a unique event. We don't do them too often, as you know, we just had one. But we don't have a citywide election very often. The cost is going to be about $60,000, and that's with opening six polls. That's one poll per ward. And looking at the history of special elections in the city, this actually would be the fourth citywide special election in the last 30 years. There was one on May 31st, 1994, in which six polls were opened, but there was a turnout of only 2,490 voters. And that was also for a school bond special election, which passed. There was another school bond, which was approved on June 24th, 2003. Again, for that election, there were six polling locations, one per ward, with a total citywide turnout of 3,875 voters. And the most recent special election was March 2nd, 2021. It was during the height of the COVID pandemic and the Delta wave. We had three polls for that election. It was a predominantly mail ballot election, in which the Secretary of State's office sent out mail ballot applications to all 60,000 voters. Ultimately, there was a total turnout citywide in that election of 7,088 voters, of which 1,200 actually voted in person at the polls, about 5,000 voted by mail, and 400 early. So we do have, obviously, a history of having special elections, maybe once a decade or so at a citywide level. But with all the planning that we have to do for 2024 in September and November, and also the presidential primary, which candidates declare in a week, the presidential candidates were declaring in Rhode Island for that, and we'll be doing signatures in January and February for delegates and presidential candidates. So we have a lot of things coming up. We just want to make sure that the timeline is maintained as a board, so that we can ensure a smooth operation for our staff, poll workers, in a good, successful election and special election for the voters. I will be here during that portion of the docket. If there's any members of, questions from members of the council. And I thank you very much for your time. I hope you have a nice evening and a great holiday.
Anyone else in chambers wishes to be heard?
Good evening, Robert Murray. I'm just confirming that ordinance 102301, which is under the Audit Committee, will not be heard tonight. It will be, I assume, there's going to be a recommendation to continue it tomorrow night. So I'll reserve any comments for tomorrow night. I just want to, I don't want my opportunity to pass, but I assume it's tomorrow night. Thank you.
That's correct, yep. All right. Last call in chambers, no one else in chambers wishing to be heard, okay? Anyone on Zoom, Tom?
There is no public comment.
Now we can move on to resolutions, which we have none, and reports of committees. Councilwoman Jermaine.
Thank you, Madam President. The Claim Committee meetings was on December 4th, and we did have some vote at the executive session. At this time, we do not have to take a vote tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jermaine. Next this evening is reporting from Safety Services and Licenses Committee, Councilman Ferry.
We have two items on the agenda tonight in reference to Safety Services and Licensing Committee. The first is a new Class BV liquor license for Cafe Knightsville LLC. Is there anybody here from that establishment tonight? Would you please step forward?
Evening, Councilman. Chairman.
You could just explain to us why you're here tonight?
My name is Christopher Micali. I am the attorney for Cafe Knightsville LLC. We are asking for a new BV liquor license to be issued to the old Knightsville pub. Mr. Mazo, who's here this evening, is going to be running the establishment. Just to give you a little history, his mom was born in Etry and lived in Knightsville until she was married. So there definitely is some roots going back to Etry and to Knightsville. So we want to keep the establishment, trying to change it from the neighborhood, I don't want to use the word dive bar, but neighborhood bar, and trying to change that, the image of it, to change it into a more of a cocktail, coffee, dessert, after-dinner place, which I think will complement the neighborhood very nicely. We're not trying to compete with the restaurants that are currently there. We're actually looking to just add something different to the neighborhood, where somebody could come from those existing restaurants after dinner to perhaps get a cocktail or some desserts. So the menu will be limited to light fare, cocktails, coffees, desserts, like I said. More on the Italian side, to keep with the neighborhood of, I know they put a lot of work and they intend on putting even a lot more work into that neighborhood to keep it kind of an Italian restaurant district. So I think it'll be a good addition to the neighborhood. You know, we're certainly, intention is, so, just so this committee and the council is aware, we're also purchasing the real estate of the property. So we're going to be making an investment into the real estate, taking down that awning that's been there for years. And, you know, unfortunately, because we're going into the winter season, we may have to do some of the renovations on phases. But certainly, we'll be looking to change the inside look of the establishment and also the outside look of the establishment for the better. So we're looking to make capital improvements of, to that establishment as well.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion or questions for the applicant? Councilman Paploskas?
Thank you. I just want to welcome you to Knightsville, in support of this application. Knightsville is a great walkable neighborhood, and I think your business plan is going to complement the restaurants nicely, and wish you success.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate your support.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, please take a vote.
Councilman Ferry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ranzouli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine.
Yes.
Councilman Donigan.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Paploskas.
Yes.
Councilman Wall.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas.
Yes.
Council President Moreno.
Yes.
Congratulations. Now, you promised you were taking that awning down, so don't forget.
That's the first thing you're going to see come down.
Thank you very much, good luck. Hope to see you soon. The second item on Safety Services would be an ordinance, an amendment of Title V. I'm just going to shorten it to machines and pool tables. I'll quickly explain, oh, do I have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Okay, this is basically something we've been doing forever and ever. The ordinance was just basically written incorrectly, and it's, our clerk so noticeably changed it. So we are not losing any money, it's not costing the city any money to change this ordinance. Do I have any other discussion? Councilwoman Vice President Vargas.
Thank you, Councilmember. I just wanted to double check, so we're just minimizing the number of pool tables that they have to report?
We've been charging $100 for pool table license all along, and it was written incorrectly. And it was, we were supposed, it said that we were charging him $100 per table. We've never charged $100 per table. It's always been $100 for the pool table license.
Got it, all right. I was just making sure, just because I wasn't sure. So it said it's $100, but I know that the state also gets a fee from the pool tables, whoever has a pool table in the city, so I didn't know. So I didn't know whether or not they're paying the city and then they're paying the state. That's why I was a little bit confused.
Madam Clerk, they're paying the city $100 for the pool table license, correct?
Yes, that's what we've been charging. The ordinance has said $100 per table, but we have not been charging that, and the law does not require us to charge per table. So we're just changing it to be consistent with the current practice.
Okay, so my assumption is the other fee is probably just with like DBR somewhere or at the state level, right? Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Councilwoman Renzulli?
Thank you, Councilman Ferry. I missed this in committee, so I just wanted to reiterate. So was it written incorrectly or have we been charging incorrectly? Because if it was written that we should be charging per table, have we just not been charging per table? And that is incorrect?
The ordinance has been written, is currently written as charging $100 per table. That has not been the practice, nor does law prescribe that you need to charge per table. We've been charging $100 annually. So this is just to codify what we've been doing for any number of years. I'm not sure the exact number, but...
But just legally, could we have been charging $100 a table and actually collecting that?
I don't see that that's, would be consistent with state law, but that's a legal question.
Solicitor? I'm just curious. Could we have been charging as it's written or it's not?
I'd have to look at it. I'm sure Mr. Vedeckia would too. It's a very small screen that he has, so he's working.
Okay, that's all right. I was just curious.
Just in perspective, when I owned Town Hall Lanes and we had pool tables, we used to pay $10 per table and, or $10 per lane. It was never, $100 per table, per table is an astronomical amount of tax for a pool table.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Ferry. To the clerk, you have something?
I do have the Rhode Island General Law printed here. I'm happy to pass it on to Mr. Vedeckia or Mr. Angel or... The law is Rhode Island General Law 5-211, and it says every person taking a license pursuant to blah, 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 a sum to be fixed by the city or town council granting the license of not less than $10, nor more than $200.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take a vote.
Councilman Ferry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Renzulli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilman Donigan?
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano?
Yes.
Councilman Paploskas?
Yes.
Councilman Wall?
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas?
Yes.
Council President Moreno?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Councilman Ferry. Now, Councilman Donigan, if you want to report to us from Finance Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. There are a few items to report out from Finance Committee that was held on December 4, being consideration of tax interest waiver approvals for the month of November 2023. As requested by the City Treasurer, this came out of committee. I would urge passage.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Ferry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Renzulli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilman Donigan?
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano?
Yes.
Councilman Paploskas?
Yes.
Councilman Wall?
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas?
Yes.
Council President Moreno?
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor. This came out of committee. I would urge passage.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Ferry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Renzulli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilman Donigan?
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano?
Yes.
Councilman Paploskas?
Yes.
Councilman Wall?
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas?
Yes.
Council President Moreno?
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor. This passed out of committee. I would urge passage this evening.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Ferry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Renzulli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilman Donigan?
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano?
Yes.
Councilman Paploskas?
Yes.
Councilman Wall?
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas?
Yes.
Council President Moreno?
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing tangible tax abatements as requested by the tax assessor. This passed out of committee. I would urge passage this evening.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Ferry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Renzulli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilman Donigan?
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano?
Yes.
Councilman Paploskas?
Yes.
Councilman Ward? Oh, Wall, now I'm doing it.
Wall, yes.
Council Vice President Vargas?
Yes.
Council President Moreno?
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution transferring 307,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act funds allocated for the purposes of improving City of Cranston school playgrounds. This ordinance was amended in committee. The amended version was passed in committee, and I would urge passage this evening.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Ferry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Renzulli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilman Donigan?
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano?
Yes.
Councilman Paploskas?
Yes.
Councilman Wall?
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas?
Yes.
Council President Moreno?
Yes.
Lastly, there is a resolution supporting a legislative act of the Rhode Island General Assembly that enables the City of Cranston to seek approval of its voters to issue bonds and notes for the construction, purchase, and/or acquisition of land and buildings, renovation, landscaping, rehabilitation, repair, improvements, furnishing, and equipping of and/or additions to Cranston Public School buildings. This passed out of committee, and I would urge passage this evening.
Motion to approve?
Second.
On this item this evening, before we have a discussion from council members, I wanted to make note of some Scrivener's errors. With respect to the title itself and the act, there is a period between share and ratio. That should be corrected. And then just throughout, which would be on Section 14 of the Act, line 22 of Section 14, is a similar Scrivener's error. And I was advised from Director Lima with respect to Section 14's language, lines 15 through 23, being in all caps, that that should not be in all caps. If that should be in lowercase because it will complicate the ballot and the way that it appears going forward. So if the clerk can make note of that as well. And other than those Scrivener's errors, I also this evening would like to entertain a motion to amend the language of the act throughout in reference to where it states that the amount would be not less than 70% at the time of issuance, and instead have it read not less than 50%. This way, we are not basically handicapped going forward in terms of borrowing money with respect to the reimbursement rate. All indicators are that the reimbursement would be higher than that, but it's best to play it safe rather than, you know, crippling us going forward where we've made these improvements, and then there's some snafu. So I would seek to make a motion to amend that, and that would be in the title itself. And it would also be in line 16 on the Section 2. So 70% would be 50%. And also on...
Council President?
Section 14, line 22 would also read...
You know what it is?
50%.
I don't think we have the full item on here. That's what it is.
If anyone is on there, on the computer, it's attached under legislation, not under the resolution. The Bond Act itself.
So I made that motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
And in terms of discussion from council members? And we'll prolong that to give people an opportunity to look it up online. Councilman Paploskas?
Thank you, Council President. Just have a question through the chair to legal. Is this a substantive change? Are we going to have to send this back to committee? With this amendment here tonight?
No.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from council members? Council Vice President Vargas, do you want a little more time?
Yes, I'm just looking at the last one. He says Section 2.
Yep. Section 2, line 16.
Council President, can you repeat that amendment for that line? Sorry about that.
Sure, it's just wherever within the body of the act it references a percentage as being 70%. We're reducing it so that the threshold is 50%. Therefore, we're not, like I said, handicapping us going forward with the reimbursement. The potential is still for greater, but it's better to have that safety net.
And then the other items were just the caps that you also had mentioned, right? For the ballot?
Yeah, that's more of a Scrivener's error. It should just not be in caps at the end of Section 14.
Madam President, if I can address the floor that the council's setting on the borrowing. So for example, your RIDE application for the process is pending on a separate track before the Rhode Island Department of Education. If the Rhode Island Department of Education comes back and says we'll only reimburse it 67%, you're dead. You can't borrow the money because the Bond Act specifically says 70 and over. That's the reason for the change. So if RIDE comes back and says 74, great. If RIDE comes back and says 51, great. If they come back and say 49, you can't do it.
I'm all set, Council President.
Okay, thank you, Council Vice President Vargas. All right, there being no further discussion, clerk, please take the roll on the motion to amend.
Councilman Ferry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Renzulli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilman Donigan?
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano?
Yes.
Councilman Paploskas?
Yes.
Councilman Wall?
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas?
Yes.
Council President Moreno?
Yes.
Now, at this time, and the motion to approve the resolution as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
Any discussion? Councilman Paploskas?
Thank you, Council President. You know, on this, I don't see a fiscal note attached, but I'm not going to pick on that. I do just want to point out comments that Director Lima had made about the election costing the city $60,000. I just hope everybody remembers that when it comes to budget time, and his budget is grossly overspent. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Renzulli?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to bring something up that was, that was in the news, and I know had a lot of comments and people that reached out to me. So for anybody listening, I just want to reaffirm that part of this bond is not to purchase The Apprentice School for $10 million more than it's worth. That is not part of this. That is misinformation, and any money going towards, beyond the purchase of that school at the valuation that it is currently would be for redevelopment of the school itself. Thank you.
Director Moretti?
Yes, just to know, we believe that 70% to 50% constitutes a substantial change, so that'd be the position of the administration.
I think you, Director Moretti, is a disagreement between the administration's take on whether or not that's a substantial change or not. Councilman Donigan, did you have your hand raised?
Just another Scrivener's error in the title of the act. The last, at the, there's a hyphen, the hyphen should be removed after 50%, 50% at the time of issuance.
Thank you. Councilwoman Renzulli?
Thank you, either to the administration or solicitor. Is it the administration's opinion or is it the solicitor for the administration's opinion that it's a substantial change? And if it is a substantial change, is there anyone, maybe our auditor, who could tell us what the potential difference financially, burden-wise, it would be on the city if it were 50 or 70? I'm hoping that it's a 74% reimbursement rate, but I'm just curious if that's what the problem is and if there's a solicitor that can confirm that.
Yeah, we're trying to work with the solicitor, so the administration has one opinion, correct, but we were told it would be at 74%. So we lowered it down to 70 to allow some wiggle room. A 70% reimbursement versus a 50% I think has a substantial impact on the taxpayers. That's why we believe that that's substantial, not a Scrivener's error.
Would the, I don't see our finance director here tonight, but would the auditor have any opinion on what potentially the difference financially that could be for impact on the city? We can't figure that out ourselves.
I believe it's a legal question I believe it's a legal question, because I think the discussions were before dictated what the reimbursement would be. And I actually think it's the legal opinion on what was actually in the ordinance or the resolution.
But cost-wise, if we get reimbursed at 50% versus 70% with the interest, do we know, is there a way that you could figure out? I know that, I'm kinda putting you on the spot here, but this was a surprise to all of us, so I'm just...
At this point, it speaks for itself, but I can't do the calculation without knowing, you know, what the rate of reimbursement is. I believe in the meetings in the initial, it was a higher reimbursement rate. So, that's what the initial discussion was. So I think it's actually a legal question to be answered.
Thank you, Auditor, I appreciate it.
And any further discussion from council members? Councilman Poploskus.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, the reason I had brought that up, you know, before when it was amended, and asked this question, is the difference between 50 and 70% reimbursement is a lot of money. And we had a committee hearing, and the public at that hearing had an opportunity to speak, and we vetted the 74%, 70%, we discussed it. Now 50% here, you know, I'm questioning my vote on this, to be honest with you, because it is a big difference in the reimbursement for the city. So, I really think out of an abundance of caution, maybe they should go back to committee. I would hate for this committee to pass this, and then I get kicked back and say it was a substantive change, and we have to do everything all over again, and it takes even longer. So, there's also that aspect to that. So, thank you.
Any further discussion from council members? We are up against the clock, as we discussed in committee, in terms of being able to avail ourselves of the up to 74% reimbursement rate with the state. If we do not act on this before year's end, then we are not going to be able to avail ourselves of that opportunity. We don't have bond counsel, the administration did not bring bond counsel here tonight to address the act or the resolution. There is a difference of opinion as to whether this is a substantial change. The 50% reimbursement rate is a floor. It doesn't mean that we're not going to seek the higher rate or get the higher rate, just like we don't know if the voters are gonna approve or disapprove of this altogether, or if the city, there have been bond referendums in the past where voters have approved, and the city didn't even put out, put anything out to bond. So, in an abundance of caution of availing ourselves of the money, I think it's important to move this forward this evening. If something were to present itself later on, and there is time, if bond counsel comes forth with some opinion, and we need to have a motion to reconsider, that's always on the table potentially as well. But I think in an effort to move this along, I'm gonna vote in favor of the resolution that includes the act this evening. With that being said, and no further discussion, clerk, if you can please take the role.
Councilman Ferry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Renzulli. No. Councilwoman Jermaine.
Yes.
Councilman Donigan.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
No.
Councilman Paploskus.
No.
Councilman Wall.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas.
Yes.
Council President Moreno.
Yes.
Motion carries six to three.
And that will do it for Finance Committee. Next up this evening, Council Vice President Vargas. You're up for Public Works.
Thank you, Council President. Public Works Committee, they met on December 7, 2023. There was...
Council Vice President Vargas, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. Okay? Thank you. Thank you. And any further discussion from council members? We are up against the clock, as we discussed in committee, in terms of being able to avail ourselves of the up to 74% reimbursement rate with the state. If we do not act on this before year's end, then we are not going to be able to avail ourselves of that opportunity. We don't have bond counsel, the administration did not bring bond counsel here tonight to address the act or the resolution. There is a difference of opinion as to whether this is a substantial change. The 50% reimbursement rate is a floor. It doesn't mean that we're not going to seek the higher rate or get the higher rate, just like we don't know if the voters are gonna approve or disapprove of this altogether, or if the city, there have been bond referendums in the past where voters have approved, and the city didn't even put out, put anything out to bond. So, in an abundance of caution of availing ourselves of the money, I think it's important to move this forward this evening. If something were to present itself later on, and there is time, if bond counsel comes forth with some opinion, and we need to have a motion to reconsider, that's always on the table potentially as well. But I think in an effort to move this along, I'm gonna vote in favor of the resolution that includes the act this evening. With that being said, and no further discussion, clerk, if you can please take the role.
Councilman Ferry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Renzulli.
No.
Councilwoman Jermaine.
Yes.
Councilman Donigan.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
No.
Councilman Paploskus.
No.
Councilman Wall.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas.
Yes.
Council President Moreno.
Yes.
Motion carries six to three.
And that will do it for Finance Committee. Next up this evening, Council Vice President Vargas. You're up for Public Works.
Thank you, Council President. Public Works Committee, they met on December 7, 2023. There was...
Council Vice President Vargas, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. Okay? Thank you.
Hey, at this time, we're going to reconvene the council meeting and again I give the floor over to Council Vice President Vargas. As Chair of Public Works.
Right, Council President, as mentioned earlier, the Public Works Committee met on December 7th. It was one resolution that came before us and then it passed. And instantly, that was resolution supporting complete streets sponsored by Councilman Donigan and Councilman Ferry. It was also co-sponsored by Councilwoman Jermaine, Council Vice President Vargas and Council President Marino.
Do we have a motion?
So moved, motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Ranzouli.
Thank you. Just want to say that on its face, I do agree with a lot of what this resolution stands for. However, I think, as oftentimes we say in these meetings, the devil's in the details. And should this become an ordinance, I think it will be important to get a fiscal note and decide where in the city that we actually could be doing this and how much it's going to cost. Because I know the city of Providence is basically tried to do this and is now undoing it. And they seem to be a more pedestrian needy city than here in Cranston, how things are located. So I just have some concerns on the implementation of this. And I don't want to be setting ourselves up to fail. But ideologically, I really like it. I just, as a resolution, I will vote for it and support it. But if this were to come forward as an ordinance, it would definitely need a little bit more work and more teeth. Thank you.
Councilman Ferry.
Yes. I did speak with the Planning Department in Providence, and they had a few hiccups that they are removing with the plan. They are not taking it away or completely eliminating it. So I'm sure in anything new, there could be hiccups. So just to make a note, they did not stop doing this. They just corrected some mistakes that they made. Thank you.
Councilman Poplaskas.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief. I spoke during the committee on this. Are we voting no on this tonight? Like I said there, I think streets are for cars. Ninety percent or more of the traffic on streets are cars. I don't want inconvenience business owners or vehicle drivers. I think that's where they belong. And just a stat I heard on the radio this week with this whole Washington Bridge debacle, ninety-six thousand cars used the Washington Bridge, forty bicyclists on the high end use the Washington Bridge. And there's a bike lane there. So I'll be voting no this evening. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Donigan. Councilman Campopiano, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Council President. In theory, I also think this is a great idea. I'm all about walkability and keeping an open mind. But the city was set up a certain way with the traffic, with the cars. And I'm worried about taking away parking places, especially like if we go along Ralph Street or some of the other areas with bike lanes and parking and trash removal. I just, I think it'd become cumbersome. And so I'm not really for it tonight. So, thank you.
Councilman Donigan.
Thank you, Council President Marino. The impetus here is that we have traffic issues, we have speeding issues, and barring a ballooning of budgets in certain areas to allow for a traffic officer at every street, on every intersection, which is impossible. We have to redesign and retrofit roads to make them safer for everyone in every mode of use in transportation. It doesn't mean it's going to work on every street. Doesn't mean we're going to go and retrofit every street. But the reality is, is that more than just cars, respectfully, use the streets. And planning such as this, tying in with smart development and multi-use development can make our streets safer and, I think, can help our local economy flourish. This is, again, it's a resolution that I worked on. I sat with the Planning Department to discuss this idea, worked with the Planning Department to write this resolution, and hoping that it passes. I look forward to working with the Planning Department, our community, and the council as a whole, to write an ordinance that works for Cranston.
Councilman Wall.
I'll keep it brief, because my voice isn't all it should be. But I share some of my colleagues' concerns. Councilwoman Ranzouli, you know, if this was, I share her concern that if this was an ordinance, I definitely wouldn't want some financial note. But on the other end, I also, you know, recognize that I support the spirit of this, the complete streets, you know, complete streets. And I don't believe reading the resolution that it hamstrings us to any protocol, that we're going to lose parking or anything like that. So as a resolution, as it's written now, I'm going to support it. But with some of the concerns that my colleagues have as well.
Council Vice President Vargas.
Right, thank you. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I believe in having equitable transportation. You know, we are a city that is growing, is growing rapidly. We need to be mindful as well as, yes, there's a lot of vehicles out on the road, but we need to make sure that we also provide accessible transportation in a manner that, as we are moving forward with the comprehensive plan, as we're moving forward with the way that there, that the direction of just having a safe pathway for all of our residents, constituents, and small business owners is definitely important. I believe that through this, as our colleague here just noted, you know, this is not an ordinance, it's an actual resolution. So what we can actually do is have community input if the time comes, to make sure like, what is working, what will not work. I think that's extremely important, and we're going to be smart about it. And there are lessons learned, there are lessons to learn from other municipalities on how they did things. And we can actually take that for what it's worth and make sure that it's going to be adjusted for our needs here, for our community in the city of Cranston. So, again, I just want to thank Councilmember Donigan for moving this forward and bringing it to our attention here in the city of Cranston.
Councilwoman Jermaine.
Thank you, Madam President. I echo the sentiment of my colleague in terms of this resolution is not biding. It is a will to show that we are working toward having a safer community. So have a safe place for our pedestrians, while we are boosting also the economy based on this model. So I think we need to open to change. It's not easy, but as Councilwoman Vargas mentioned, our community are evolving. So we are growing, and we need to work with the time. So having this model is being implemented in other communities, and we can have them as an example. And ensure that we don't make the same mistakes they already made. So we learn from them, and then we can move in this model to make our community safer. So I think this is a will to say we are going in the right direction to make our community safer.
Having heard from all council members, I want to thank Councilman Donigan and Councilman Ferry for initially sponsoring and bringing forth this resolution. And as I stated in committee, we are a large enough city that I believe we can encompass these improvements. It's not a one-size-fits-all. It's not going to be bumpouts and encroaching upon businesses. This is something that we are looking to implement with respect to the planning going forward, given that the comprehensive plan is in its process. And we need and we owe this to our businesses to make it more pedestrian-friendly, to make it more public transportation-friendly. There are numerous aspects and enhancements that will improve our city, and will improve our residences, hopefully, and will also improve our commercial businesses. For that reason, I will be in support of this resolution this evening. At this time, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Ferry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ranzouli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine.
Yes.
Councilman Donigan.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas.
No.
Councilman Wall.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas.
Yes.
Council President Marino.
Yes. And Council Vice President Vargas, you can report back from the Ordinance Committee. Thanks.
So the Ordinance Committee met on December 7th. There was two ordinance. One of them was nine dash twenty-three dash zero four, Ordinance Amendment of Title Seventeen, Chapter Twenty-four of the City of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled Performance Standards Generally Adding Section Seventeen Point Two Four Point Five Zero, Retail Sales of Cannabis, as amended in committee on December 7th. This is sponsored by Mayor Ken Hopkins. I believe, actually, this was going to be heard tomorrow evening, was it not?
Are you referring to nine twenty-three oh one?
Uh, yes.
That's the marijuana ordinance? That's not being continued?
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, did you report back that it came out of committee that approved? I'm sorry, I may have missed that.
No, no, I was going to say that, that, I believe, I thought that that was actually, sorry, that came out of committee. There was a vote taken to be, there was a vote taken then, right, to amend, there were some amendments done that evening.
It was amended and approved as amended in committee.
Okay, perfect, yes.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Solicitor Verdeckia.
If I may, Madam President, I just, there's some information I'd like to relay to the council based on some conversations I had last Friday. I took it upon myself to contact the Cannabis Board, which is, that is the board that is basically in charge of administering the retail cannabis sales laws and statutes. And because I know there were a lot of questions that came up during the committee hearing, and the biggest question was, and my concern at the time was, trying to ensure that what we enact doesn't conflict with the state statute as well as rules and regulations that are going to be promulgated by the Cannabis Commission. What I found out was that the commission, as of right now, as I speak, there are no rules and regulations. They have not met, they have not drafted them. The only thing that is on the books right now is the state statute, specifically the one that talks about local control. That's all we've got to go by. So the amendments that I proposed last time brought us into conformity with the buffer zone. We amended it from a thousand to five hundred feet. That was a conflict. And the other line was the one regarding signage. But what I wanted to relay to the council, and there isn't too much I want to say in an open public forum, this may be appropriate for an executive session either next month or the following month. But basically, until these rules and regs are adopted by the Cannabis Commission, it's going to be impossible for us to be a hundred percent certain that whatever we enact is going to be in total compliance with state law. So I have a meeting, tentative meeting, set up for January, a meeting with one of the commissioners. There were three commissioners. And these other people, these three people literally are the ones who are going to be writing all of these rules and regulations. So I think I indicated before that it might be a good idea to get this enacted, because what it does do is it limits any retail establishment to an M1 or an M1, M2 industrial zone. And there was some concern that, well, perhaps someone could locate this in a C-zone or a B-zone because it is retail sales. But the other thing I was informed of is that realistically, the state is not going to be issuing these licenses for several months. In fact, it may be up to a year from now. So it isn't as urgent as I stand here tonight as it was when I stood before the committee last time, because I did not have this information. I have it now. So it's up to the council at this point. We can adopt this framework for now. But I just point out at this point that this, whatever we enact, is going to probably have to undergo some fairly significant changes in the future, depending upon what the state enacts, the commission enacts, in terms of rules and regulations. And at this point, nobody has any idea what those rules and regulations might be. I know, like, Councilwoman Ranzouli had some questions about hours of operation, just as an example. Those haven't even been established yet by the state. So we have an hours, we have hours of operation in the ordinance under, in line forty or line thirty-nine, which is fine for now. But that doesn't mean, I can't stand here tonight and say that's in compliance with state law, because nobody knows. So the task for the council tonight is, and the decision to be made is, do you want to go with this for now to establish this general framework with the realization and the knowledge that it's going to have to be significantly altered in the future, in all likelihood? Or we could wait until I meet with the state, and we could wait until they enact these rules and regulations so that we have appropriate guidance. That's a decision you need to make. I just wanted to point all of this out and give you this information, because I literally did not learn of this until Friday. And as I said, once I meet with the commission, a representative of the commission, I'll probably have a much, much better idea as to how they're thinking in terms of regulating these establishments. So it's up to you what you'd like to do tonight.
Thank you, Solicitor Verdeckia. I can say for myself, I would much rather put these, pass this ordinance this evening, and then revisit it after the New Year, so that we at least have something in place. And then we can make corrections once the state enacts different, you know, regulations. Because what if in the event they don't enact any type of regulations dealing with some of the things that we have sought to put forth? So I would much rather move forward with this ordinance before January first and the law takes effect, and then revisit it as needed. Councilman Donigan.
I second that sentiment wholly.
Any other discussion, Councilman Poplaskas?
Yeah, I was just going to say, it's not unlike any legislative session where they fine-tune things or change things, and we have to go back and should move forward tonight. And I agree with Council President. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ranzouli.
Thank you. I understand the desire to move expeditiously on this if we want to keep in certain zones. But I know that it was expressed in past meetings, that part of that reason was because currently how our zoning is, is it correct that someone could apply to put this in any retail zone currently? Currently, as our zoning stands, could someone apply for this now? Or?
The short answer would be, yes, anybody can apply for anything except for one thing. They don't have a state license. So they couldn't operate, no matter what. So, and the state, based on the information I have, is not going to be handing these things out, as I said, for several months. So the question then would become, if someone applied and they were in a C-zone or a B-zone, and we, theoretically, this is all hypothetical, and we granted it, and then we pass this ordinance limiting those establishments to the M1 zone or the M2 zone, they would have to go to the state, apply for the state license, and the state is going to ask them, are you in conformity with local, they're going to have to prove that they're in conformity with all local ordinances and regulations and things of that nature. They won't be, because by that time, we'll have the ordinance enacted saying you have to stay in an M1 zone and M2 zone. So now that raises an issue. Would they be able to say, for instance, well, wait a minute, you know, you approved the zoning in January, now in July, you're telling us, we can't do it. Could they possibly say that? They could, I guess, possibly. Would they be successful? I doubt it. But it does leave open that possibility.
Has anyone already applied for this? Are we, by passing this, my concern is literally opening up the city to a lawsuit. We have other things that we're going to go talk about in executive session tonight about lawsuits. We're constantly getting sued. We, a lot of money in our budget goes to settling lawsuits and paying attorneys. So I want to understand if we pass this tonight, and somebody applied a week ago, where do they stand? When somebody applies for one of these licenses, because I think they need, do they need approval through the city to have like a location before they can apply for a state license?
Yes, all of that has to be in place. But I don't want to get too, I don't want to delve too deep into this in open forum. This is more appropriately discussed in executive session, because it could be to the detriment of the city if we start discussing potential liabilities and hypothetical situations involving liability. So I think we should stop at this point. If there's going to be more questions, we should do it in executive session. Personally, I don't see the harm in enacting this tonight. I really don't. I just wanted to make everybody aware that this is not going to be a finished product tonight. So, and I don't know who's out there, I don't know what's out there, I don't know who's applied for zoning certificate, who hasn't. I don't know. I don't know that. So there's nothing to lose, so to speak, by doing this tonight. But I just wanted everyone to know that this isn't going to be the final word, not even close.
Thank you, Solicitor Verdeckia. And I will add this, if the state hasn't issued any licenses, if someone right now is making arrangements, that's at their own peril, because they don't have a license. So I don't see how passing this ordinance this evening is going to be problematic. And again, I think it's the right thing to do.
And one other thing, Madam President, if I might add, these licenses, I believe, are going to follow the same path as the medical marijuana licenses in terms of how the licenses are even issued. I believe it's going to be a lottery system, just like it was with the medical marijuana. So someone out there is spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. And again, I have no idea how many people would apply for this, fifteen, twenty, ten, whatever. But there's only going to be four licenses in a geographic zone, Cranston, Warwick, East Greenwich, North Kingston. And out of those four licenses, not all four are going to be retail. By state law, one has to be a co-op, one has to be what's called social activity. It goes back to prohibition. That's how complicated this is getting. So the odds of someone getting one of these licenses, as Madam President said, is a long shot, because it literally is a flip of a coin or a ball. So.
At this time, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Ferry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ranzouli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine.
No.
Councilman Donigan.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
No.
Councilman Poplaskas.
Yes.
Councilman Wall.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas.
Yes.
Council President Marino.
Yes.
Right, Council President, the next item is ten dash twenty-three oh one. I believe this is an ordinance, an amendment of Title Seventeen of the Code of the City of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled Zoning, sponsored by Mayor Ken Hopkins. This is actually being continued for tomorrow's ordinance, special meeting that we're having tomorrow evening.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Do I have a motion to continue to?
Motion to continue.
Second. Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Ferry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ranzouli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine.
Yes.
Councilman Donigan. Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas.
Yes.
Councilman Wall.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas.
Yes.
Council President Marino.
Yes. And just to be clear, in the event we didn't state the date, the date is tomorrow evening, December nineteenth, Ordinance Committee at six-thirty, I believe, and full council at six-forty-five. Next on the agenda is public comment for undocketed items. If there's anyone in chambers or on Zoom that wishes to be heard on any undocketed matters, please state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments limited to four minutes. We'll first start within chambers. Is there anyone in chambers that wishes to be heard on any undocketed matters? There being no one, is there anyone on Zoom, Tom?
There is no public comment.
Moving on. The next agenda item that has matters is executive communications. We have the legal expense analysis for the period up to date from July one, two thousand and twenty-three to December eleven. Does anyone have any discussion, any questions to the administration on the legal expense report? Councilwoman Ranzouli.
Thank you. Solicitor, I don't know if appropriate to ask in open session, but I'm just curious, we have any idea when some of these things are going to end? Like, when are we going to stop getting bills for Natick Solar, for example, from Coastal? Do we have any idea about any of these? And if we can't discuss this in open session, you can just say so. So I'm unsure if this is appropriate to ask in open session. But I am just curious if you can give us an idea, if we know if we're coming to the end on a few of these that have been going on for a while. One example is with Coastal Partners, and one example, another example would be Natick Solar. How long shall we expect to be continuing to get bills for these?
I'm sorry, that, those obviously would be questions that I'd be happy to answer in executive session.
Thank you.
There being no further discussion on that. Next up is Director Pazulo, who I believe is here in chambers, just a report on the status of the comprehensive plan.
Good evening. Not really much to report from last month. Working with consultants. We'll be issuing several chapters a month as we get into the winter and spring. So, like I said, just a couple of weeks ago, I think there's going to be a public hearing on this, a substantial one, probably on January twenty-fourth. But that will, that will get decided by the Plan Commission, the official date. And that's going to be, you know, probably one of the most robust public meetings we have in this Phase One of the Comp Plan rewrite. So any questions on that, you guys can get in touch with me. But not much else to report on at the moment.
Thank you, Director Pazulo. Thank you, Director Pazulo. And we have the item of Chief Warren from the Fire Department requesting that his name be placed on the pension roll effective December 29th of 2023.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Council Vice President Vargas.
Thank you, Council President. So it looks as if, obviously, the chief will be retiring next, a week, two weeks from now. So, just wanna take this time, if the chief happens to watch this, or through his staff who's here this evening, just thank him for his time in public safety here in the city of Cranston, and it's a great city that we have. You know, as a firefighter, when you dedicate your career to the city, it's not an easy one at all. You know, you leave your house, you don't know if you're coming back, depending on the outcome and the situation that you may face. Here in the city, you just don't know what type of fires you're dealing with. So I just wanted to take him, thank him for his time, and wish him a happy retirement. That is all.
Thank you. Councilman Paplaskas.
Thank you, Madam President. Chief Warren, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with on many things over the years in the city. Certainly will be missed. I'm happy to say one of his last acts as chief was to call Santa and make sure he showed up in Knightsville at the tree lighting a week ago, and he did a fine job. So, certainly gonna miss him being around. So, best wishes, chief.
Any other council members?
I would like to express my congratulations to the chief and thank him immensely for his years. I believe he's been in the service of the Fire Department since, I think it was 1985. That is very commendable. And it's also a big sacrifice for his family, which I'm sure they're glad to have him back after all of his years of service. And I will say that in my time on council, every encounter that I've had with Chief Warren has been always above board. He brings compassion to the job, which not everyone does. But he most certainly has. Not just for advocating for his department, but also for members in the community, particularly in times of distress. And we thank him very much for his dedication. And I wish him the best of luck in the years going forward with his family.
Clerk, if you can please take the roll.
Councilman Ferry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ranzouli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine.
Yes.
Councilman Donigan.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Yes.
Councilman Wall.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas.
Yes.
Council President Moreno.
Yes.
Next, we have consideration of the request from Deputy Chief Robert Ryan for a one-year continuation of service with the Fire Department at the period of December 13 of this year to December 12 of 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And any discussion? I just wanna thank Deputy Chief Robert Ryan for his service. And clerk, if you can please take the roll. Thanks.
Councilman Ferry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ranzouli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine.
Yes.
Councilman Donigan. Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Yes.
Councilman Wall.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas.
Yes.
Council President Moreno.
Yes.
For Council President Communications this evening, I have a reminder to the mayor to make nominations for appointments at the Board of Canvassers in advance of the January council meeting. There are numerous elections that will be coming up in the 2024 year. And I do understand that, through the clerk, that the mayor has made some nominations that will appear on next month's agenda. So we're looking forward to that and wanna thank him for doing so. And then I also have just fond wishes for a wonderful and safe holiday season and a Happy New Year to all. Next up, Councilmember Communications, Councilman Paplaskas.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanna take a minute to thank everyone that was involved with the Knightsville Christmas Tree Lighting at Eche Park. It was a big gathering this last week. Very happy how everything went, but it took a lot of people to help make it happen. So bear with me for a minute. Just wanna give everybody a shout-out. You know, on the day of the event, we had a lot of volunteers helping. And they gave out 400 slices of pizza, 300 calzone slices, 500 cups of hot chocolate, 250 cookies, 250 candy canes, 500 bags of popcorn, 180 bottles of water. And helping out that day was Aubrey and Tom Lima, Shannon Carlson, Steve Shambroon, Maria Manzi, Debbie Campopiano, Councilman Richard Campopiano, Dustin Erickson, Will Ellis and Ty Carton. Helping set up, Mayor Ken Hopkins, Anthony Malelo, Dominic Fusco from the School Committee, Councilman Campopiano, Joseph Agressi, my daughter Sophia, and my wife Judy, who spent six or seven hours on a 12-foot ladder decorating the tree. So I definitely owe her many dinners for her work. Wanna thank Director Moretti and the staff in building maintenance for getting a couple of outlets installed and done. Wanna thank Tom DeSao. Probably saw a post on Facebook. He built a custom tree stand to hold the tree. It's been very windy. The tree has not fallen. So, Tom, if you watch this, job well done. I also wanna thank the businesses that donated the food that we all gave away and that helped out. Lou and Berto's Italian Kitchen, Thirsty Beaver Cranston, St. Mary's Feast Society and Ladies Auxiliary, Virginia Spanish Peanut, R&amp;D Tool Engineering. And also I'd like to thank St. Mary's School Fire for being there, Father Cisco, Chief Warren, and I just mentioned, Major Padalano, and our Cranston Police and Fire Departments. I hope I didn't forget anybody. If I did, I apologize. Thank you all for your help. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Paplaskas. Next, we have introduction of new business. I'll entertain a motion to take the new business matters as a block. Any discussion? There being none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Ferry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ranzouli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine.
Yes.
Councilman Donigan.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Yes.
Councilman Wall.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas.
Yes.
Council President Moreno.
Yes.
And just for, even though it's obvious, the presentation is not the new business being carried over to committee. But, in terms of the block, do we have a motion to approve on the block?
Second.
Any discussion? And just to be clear, it's a motion to approve to refer all of the new business to committee, but for the presentation as a block. Clerk, please take the roll.
Excuse me. Councilman Ferry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ranzouli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine.
Yes.
Councilman Donigan. Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Yes.
Councilman Wall.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas. Council President Moreno.
Yes. Next up, we will have the presentation. Legal Counsel Stephen Angel regarding the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you, Madam President. So the president had asked me to talk about the Open Meetings Act tonight. It's less of a presentation and more of a dialogue. So, in reference to, first of all, how the Attorney General's Office is handling complaints with respect to the Open Meetings Act, some of the decisions coming out of that office, and some of the things that have been observed here in terms of council member dialogue on the floor with respect to certain topics, or just topics in general. So I wanna give you a sense that this Attorney General's Office, policy-wise, is a lot less lenient with what they will allow to slide, quite frankly. They are strict constructionists with respect to what's on the agenda. So, for example, if you look at page 5, there's a consideration of request from Deputy Chief Robert Ryan for one-year continuation and so forth. It's not an opportunity to talk about Lieutenant Bob Smith. It's not an opportunity to talk about the general operations of the Cranston Fire Department. It's not about talking about leases for trucks, or cars, or hoses, or puddles of water outside somebody's house. It's strictly to talk about the consideration of a request from a deputy chief to continue in service, period. If a complaint is made and you talk about those other things, that's a pretty serious situation. Now, the measuring stick, if you will, by the open government unit is, okay, council, you may have violated the Open Meetings Act, but was your conduct willful in knowing? Okay? When the council member has been made aware that they're beyond the bounds of what's acceptable under the Open Meetings Act, and they continue, if I was sitting in the shoes of a judge, or I was sitting in the shoes of someone in the open government unit, you can very definitely form an opinion that the conduct is willful. And when conduct is willful, it subjects the body in the city treasury to a $5,000 fine. Statute's an interesting statute, however. Is it the body? Is it per head? Bill gets kinda big when there are nine people in a room. So, we've got to be a little more, and I realize folks have a lot to say, be very descriptive in what you wanna talk about, or what's on the agenda. And that will provide you with the latitude that you need to cover a variety of topics under one heading. But, you know, if you wanna talk about everything that goes on in the Cranston Fire Department, then that's your topic. You wanna talk about what's going on in the Cranston Fire Department, enlist some specificity. But once you go outside of that, you've run afoul of the Open Meetings Act for purposes of discussing it in public. And that's, you know, and now I wanna take your questions, because I know that this is very situational. John and I have worked on a number of issues related to this over a course of many years. It's very situational, it's very nuanced, and every topic can be different. There are nights that I've sat here and I've thought, okay, how far off the beaten path are we? And what's the relationship between where we are now and what was on the agenda? As long as we can make that relationship, okay, and we're comfortable with that, that's fine. But when we're way off the topic, you know, you have to stop, or you subject the body to scrutiny. So, other questions? Councilman?
Thank you, Attorney Angel. I just have a quick question. I hope that it's an appropriate question. If-
I left the topic very broad, so if it has to do with the Open Meetings Act-
It does. If we are, say, someone goes off-topic or in violation of the Open Meetings Act, does that negate everything else that we did in the meeting? Does that violation now mean we need to redo that meeting and everything that we passed? Or no?
Let me see if I can wrap my head around that question. So, that assumes that you're taking a vote. If you take a vote on something that's not on the agenda, yes, the vote will be nullified, and you'll have to do it again. Okay, you can't take a vote on something that's not on the agenda. But let's say, for example, let's use, Deputy Chief Ryan's probably never been talked about so much in his life. But let's use Deputy Chief Ryan, for example, okay, as an agenda item. And let's say that, you know, the council decided it was a great opportunity to talk about changing the color of the hoses on fire trucks from the color that they are to pink. And everybody agrees, and Councilman Vargas is excited because it's her favorite color, and she makes a motion that that's what should be done. And somebody seconds it, and the council takes a vote. That vote's gonna be nullified.
But it just concerns the specific vote. It doesn't concern anything else that happens in the meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then my other question is, just because the topic came up tonight, is this, this might be separate from the Open Meetings Act, and just tell me if it is. When we advertise something, and then we substantially substantive change, we have to make that determination between the lawyers. Tonight, there was a disagreement on that. If is that, could that perhaps be an Open Meetings violation if someone made a complaint that that was a substantive change that we went forward with? And it was, people did not show up because they didn't think that we were making that amendment? Do you understand what I'm saying? I don't know if I'm asking clearly, but-
No, I get it. The public policy behind the Open Meetings Act is providing the public first with notice that there's something that's being heard and just what it is, with some general specificity, if you will, and an opportunity to be heard if. Now, by the way, as a public body, public bodies, I think, just assume that the public has a right to be heard. The Open Meetings Act does not guarantee the public's right to be heard. Generally speaking, public hearing, the legal mechanism of holding public hearings is where the public has an absolute right to be heard. But the council can't have meetings in workshop form, for example, where there is no public comment. But the Open Meetings Act is designed to essentially tell the world at large what business it is that the council wishes to consider. So that, you know, I know, for example, Attorney Murray, who's in the audience, is a regular reader of council agendas. And so, as somebody who's interested in the business of the city, if he doesn't see anything on the agenda that's of interest to him, he's not gonna come to a meeting or otherwise tune in. But if you get to the meeting and you change the ballgame and decide to talk about something that's not on the agenda, he's been deprived of that notice as well as the public at large. And that's where the complaint would lie on something like that.
So with that, could someone interpret a substantive change as not something that they had the opportunity to come speak about, because that's not how it was presented originally on the agenda?
The substantive change has more to do with the legal dynamics of advertising, okay, and checking those boxes. If you look at it through, in my opinion, the lens of the Open Meetings Act, the resolution was advertised. The Bond Act was, I won't say advertised, it was published. Okay, it's a publication requirement that exists in the Open Meetings Act, not necessarily an advertisement that exists in a newspaper or something of that nature. The Open Meetings Act provides that you have to publish the agenda and reasonably make access to its attachments or underlying information available. That was done in this case.
So that substantive change has more to do with advertising? What-
The substantive change, for example, would be, well, what's the total amount of the Bond Act? That's a massive substantive change. Right? You know, we had the discussion before, and this was discussed under the topic on numerous occasions, and tonight. We've had the discussion before on the Bond Act. First of all, how much money is the city borrowing? We're not borrowing anything. Okay, we're looking to the voters to approve the city's capacity to bond. That does not mean that this council or that administration across the hall would necessarily think it's a good idea at the time that the money becomes available. So, that's a totally different issue. The issue that was raised tonight with respect to the percentage had more to do with a certain congruity in the process with the Rhode Island Department of Education. Okay? The Rhode Island Department of Education has, or I should say, promises a certain level of reimbursement to cities and towns if they meet certain requirements during the construction process. Okay? If you think you're gonna meet them all, then wonderful. But that's not, it's not- The underlying substantive change, okay, is not to the legislation, but to the economic impact on the city with respect to how much the city would actually pay. You follow? And that's why I say these discussions are nuanced.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Are there other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Attorney Angel. Next this evening, this evening, we have executive session. Do I have a motion?
Motion to move into executive session. Second.
Any discussion? There being none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Ferry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ranzouli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine.
Yes.
Councilman Donigan. Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Yes.
Councilman Wall.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vargas. Council President Moreno.
Yes.
Okay, we're now out of executive session at this time. Entertaining motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? And there were no votes taken in executive session. All those in favor of the motion to seal the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Next, we have informational. Purposes only, the resignation of Jeffrey Barone from the Cranston Board of Canvassers effective January first. Any discussion? Any questions? None? Motion to adjourn at this time? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.